She didn't flinch that time. You're, you are in the zone. Linda is a lion. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February 28th, 2023, Tenino City Council Work Session. All council members are present. We do not have any, any agenda items on the work session. So unless council has any topics they'd like to throw out there, I will move into staff reports and we'll knock those out in the work session. Chamber of Commerce, George is not with us tonight, so Linda will read off the George Report, which covers Chamber of Commerce, Economic Development Council, South Thurston Economic Development Initiative, and Arch Commission.
The next chamber was meeting is March 15 at the Sandstone Cafe, and our mayor is going to do the State of the City address. Oregon Trail Days Committee meeting is March 6th, 5:30 at the Sandstone Cafe. The public is welcome to attend that. They can use all the help they can get. Arts Spring Market is March 24th, 25th, and 26th in the Kodiak Room, and it's always a great, great thing. March, the city meeting is March 17th from 8 to 9:30 at the Cota
Community Center, thank you. The Arch Commission Banner Art Contest closes Friday, March 17th at 5:00 PM, and the mayor was in attendance at the EDC, so I can't give a report on that.
The Economic Development Council met this last week, and it was at the Timberland Regional Library Headquarters. So we got a rundown from Director Cheryl Haywood on what the Timberland Regional Library's been up to. We get a regular report from Linda, the librarian, on their goings-on, so we are well aware of the fact that they're doing the night check-in here in Tenino soon. They talked about their library that they have added in at the park. They've talked about their circulation numbers, and we got a generally good report from the Timberland Regional Library. And then we went into a presentation from the interim City Manager of Lacey and the City Manager of Olympia on their efforts to combat homelessness and put together supportive housing efforts. And it was a good report, and that was pretty much the, the whole meeting. So that is the EDC presentation. VCB, South Thurston Fire. We have two commissioners with us tonight that could report. You guys want to draw straws?
Go ahead, Dave.
Would you please take the lectern? State your name and address and make sure that the microphone is
Turned on, please?
I do know that.
Yes.
Dave Waterson, 1132 Central Avenue East. I think most of you probably know, I was appointed to fill a vacant position on the Board of Fire Commissioners a few weeks ago, unfortunate passing of one of their members, so it's sad that he passed away, but I look forward to working on the board. As I told all of them, I'm, anytime anybody has a question or concerns or anything, feel free to contact me. If I don't know an answer to something you have a question about, I will find it out and be, I try to be an open book. So whether it's good or bad, I will try to provide you correct information in a timely manner. So like I said, feel free to contact me anytime. The things, I think the big thing is still the property. The, the fire district's looking for property to build a station. You know, they do have the option of using the spot where they're at and building something new, but there's some difficulties. You know, they've had some, I guess, I don't know, probably shouldn't talk about where they're at or anything. I don't know if it's public information, but they're still trying to work through that and find a place they can build a station that's suitable. What else? John, is there anything else big that I'm?
Not really.
Yeah. So anyway, yeah, it's good to be on the board and get to sit with John every, every once in a while again. Has any questions about the district or? Okay?
Thank you, sir. Library. Linda typically comes in a little later. Museum, do we have a museum report?
How are museums, not the ones that you visited?
Not a lot really going on right now, but we are open every Friday and Saturday, and you can come see us from noon to four. And the South Thurston County Historical Society meets the third Thursday of every month at 7 o'clock. Also, Rich Edwards and I are working on a big historical project, but I'm just going to tease you with that, and hopefully that will be dropping this summer for our 150th Jubilee.
They're not going to be able to sleep tonight after that teaser.
I know, right? History project. Sounds riveting, but it will be. It's going to be great.
Thank you, Jessica. Tenino Community Service Center. Jody, no, come on. It's not that your kids aren't here to, okay. Don't, don't pay any attention to Jody over there. Civil Service Commission, no report. Facade Improvement Grant Review Committee. Linda, do you have a report from? Okay. Finance Committee, has not met, I believe. Public Safety Committee, Chief of Police. No report, nothing? Okay. Director of Public Works.
You have it there.
I do. Waste, wastewater treatment plant, no major issues. Septage receiving is back up again. Total January septage receiving, 124,900 gallons. So that, that's pretty good for the month of January. Projects, new park toys, concrete curbs are being done this week. Prepping for sidewalks. Quarry House is close to being done. It is absolutely close to being done. Did you want to share the pictures?
I do want to share the pictures.
Okay. We have just a few more, a few small electrical things to be done, so we are waiting the electrician. Insulation in the attic and a handrail and ramp. The handrail going up into the front door and then the ramp around the back. It needs some, some TLC, so.
These are very small. I don't know. I apologize. There's the kitchen.
You can have fun in that kitchen.
The main.
It, it looks really nice. Yeah, it's, yeah, when you go in there, you'll be floored. You know, we used to, the joke was if you set a marble down, it would just roll. But, and there wasn't a flat spot in the floor or the ceiling, and now it's, it's absolutely perfect.
I have a playground one, too.
So.
They left dirt out there last week.
Yeah, they pulled, hauled out a bunch of dirt and they put in the forms today for the concrete. So we've got to put curbs around the outside where the, you know, the toys are in the middle. We've got to put the curbing in so it'll hold in all the soft fall, because there's going to be like 16 inches of that wood chip soft fall, the engineered fiber. And so in the next two weeks, it's always two weeks, we should be able to use the playground. We're not going to do a big grand opening until after we get the, the pump track installed as well. So we're expecting like sometime in May, we would do a final grand opening for the, is that? Yeah, yeah.
Well, the truck should be here, though.
Yeah, but I think with installation and everything, we're, we're shooting for May for having that all done. Quarry House should be done in two weeks, and that was a joke. You guys are supposed to laugh. Thank you. And when that's done, we'll, we'll plan on a ribbon cutting of some sort. Working on potholes. He puts that in there. That's a, that's a constant battle. And then they're out reading meters and doing various other public works functions. City Planner, he is not here tonight. Code Enforcement Building Inspector, do you have a report for us, sir? Okay, okay. Park Specialist.
Just been. Just been busy working on grants and looking around for opportunities to repair some streets kind of grants. Also, in the next month or two, we should have the new website for the city going. And also working on the Sportsman website. That is a lot. A lot of details goes into kind of creating a whole program, so that has definitely been something. So I'm hoping by April that that will be up and running, and we will be able to start putting classes out there. So we got yoga planned already, and so about the time Quarry House is ready to go, hopefully the sophomore will also be ready to go.
Thank you.
Any questions?
City Attorney is not present. Clerk Treasurer. Come on, you guys. You gotta have something to talk about. Tell the council what you've been up to. You're not going to get away with that easy.
Very busy week. Just been so busy. I'm still working on the audit. Microphone. Somebody else left it on. Anyway, working with auditors on the audit, we're having weekly meetings and pulling tons of stuff for them, so that's going well. Working with Jessica a lot on all the fun stuff of our new website, and hopefully we'll be able to have the Quarry House up and open very soon. It looks fantastic. Two weeks. Yeah, that's it, two weeks. Next meeting, you guys should have some stuff about financing for the Vector and the Sweeper. I've been working with Timberland Bank. We're going to use them, so that was a recommendation from our attorney. And that's all I can think of. Good stuff.
Okay.
You're welcome.
So Mayor's Report. It's been a busy last two weeks. There's been a lot of things going on, of course. I'm sure everybody's aware of most of it. The, you know, I talked about attending the EDC meeting. Attended meeting for the marketing plan for the Ag Park, and that was, seen a lot of Ag Park folks here. So attended the marketing meeting for the Ag Park. There are, there's a lot of movement there, and it's very exciting. I imagine there's some people here that have questions about King 5 News Report, and you know, I just, I can read off the statement that we, that we put out earlier this week, and so I'll do that. So Reference Officer Christopher Backus, if you've not read the statement, we put this out within about 48 hours of the King 5 Report. Officer Backus was subject to a full background investigation prior to, to, prior to hiring by a third party to his employment with the city of Tenino. That background investigation included a review of available previous employment files from multiple employers. Officer Backus's investigation was conducted in accordance with Washington state law. That background investigation included a criminal history check, psychiatric evaluation, and polygraph examination to determine truthfulness throughout the hiring process. Currently, and at the time of Officer Backus's hire, he was and is in good standing with the Criminal Justice Training Commission. After a news story broke earlier this week, an investigation by a third party has been initiated by the city of Tenino. Officer Backus was removed from patrol and placed on modified assignment pending the investigation's conclusion. So within, within a very short period of time of us seeing the news report, action was taken, and we're looking into it, and we're trying to get to the bottom of things. We, we are not going to take any action at all based on a King 5 News Report. That would be absolutely irresponsible. I, I don't, I don't care, you know, what the news report says. We have to find out the facts. We have to get to the bottom of things. We have to look at our processes. We have to look at what the previous employer did and didn't do, and we have to make a decision based on facts, not on news reports. That's it. So we have hired a third party. We're not going to investigate ourselves. That's, you know, right? That's not a good practice. We have hired a Seattle law firm that has an attorney that does investigations into this sort of thing. It's not out of the city's pockets, right? We have insurance, we have an insurance company, and they, it's in their best interest to help us do those kinds of things. So, and when employment matters come up like this, and anytime there's any type of personnel matter, we're not going to comment on it. So when Mayor Wayne gets an email from King 5 or Russian state media or CNN asking about a person, a member of our team, I'm not going to talk to them about personnel matters. You don't do that. We are going to figure out what's going on. We're going to look at facts. We're not going to act rashly. We're not going to act emotionally, and we're not going to investigate ourselves. So we have an attorney from outside of the city that specializes in these things, that has been hired by our insurance company, that is going to get to the bottom of it. We expect them to give us some type of full report on everything from 2015 to yesterday, and that will likely come with some types of, type of recommendations. Maybe there's recommendations about our hiring process. Maybe there is some findings with a previous employer where things were not done right in an investigation. Maybe King 5 didn't get the whole story. We don't know. So after that's all done, we'll make a decision, and we'll be very transparent. We'll be open with the public about it, and we'll have more community conversations, and then we'll figure out what we're, what we're going to do. I'm not going to pretend that I've made any decisions or anybody else has, because we don't, right? Everybody deserves to know the truth, and so that's what we're trying to figure out. So I have a statement from the attorney. If anybody has any questions, and I imagine there's people that are going to provide public comments on it, so I'm just going to give you what my answer would be to any of you if you have a question. And it is, thank you for your question. We are looking into this matter as quickly as we can. I can assure you that we had a thorough background check conducted before a hiring decision was made, and those are required by state law. We don't skimp on those things. Before I can fully and accurately answer your questions, I need to allow all of the relevant information to be gathered and evaluated. I don't want to guess or speculate, so thank you for your questions, if you have any. That's, that's really all there is to it. You know, we've, we've got work to do, and we're going to do it. So if that's what you're concerned with, or you have any questions about that, I appreciate it. And now my computer's logged off. What happened?
Says low battery.
All right. What was next? Next. Is Be That.
So the meeting for the parent meeting that was supposed to be taking place last Wednesday was canceled due to the weather, so they're going to reschedule it. They just haven't came out with the time yet.
Okay. Solid Waste Advisory Board. Thank you, ma'am. TCOM, Tenino School Board.
No report.
Rachel and Jessica.
No report from me unless you have something to add. I've already been going over all of the events and all the things, so nothing really new.
Okay. TRPC.
That's Friday, and TPV is next Wednesday.
You guys are so not fun tonight. Yeah, Legislature. Linda?
I sent an email.
Is there anything in that email you would like to share with us? We have 20 minutes, 10 minutes.
Well, let's see. There's some changes in the Master Program Renew and Recycle for the Shoreline Management Act. They're wanting to raise it to 10 years instead of eight, which would be good. The, the planning under GMA must be, must adopt and amend their development regulations, zoning regulations, or other official controls prior to July 1st, 2024. That's another bill, and it's in rules on second reading. 1245 is the companion bill to 5364 on the GMA, and it is on the House floor calendar. 1784 appropriates approximately 28 million to the State General Fund in fiscal year to support the Food Assistance Program operated by the Departments of Agriculture, Social and Health Services, and Health, and this bill is on the floor calendar in the House. Oh, and sick, House Bill 1670 changes the 101% revenue growth limit for local property taxes to 100% plus population change, changes an inflation with a capped limit of 103%, and this bill is moving right along. The most important thing is that all bills have to be out of their house of origin by 5:00 PM on March 8th, which is a week from tomorrow.
Thank you, Linda. I see several representatives from the Ag Park. We have 10 minutes. Is there anything you would like to present or talk about or come up and team up on? Perry, are you the leader?
Hello, everybody.
Is your mic, okay, is on?
Yeah.
Okay. Green light.
There we go. Okay, we have action. Good evening, everyone. My name is Perry Shea. Live at 14307 Barbo Drive, Tenino, Washington. Lived here almost my whole life, except for a small stint in Phoenix. I really, if there's really questions from you that you'd like to ask me, but we've been working on a pretty good pace here with the, the advancement of the project. We have great tenants that are looking to be in the new buildings. I'm looking forward to getting those underway. Exciting news today. I think the, the city put out the ad for the site infrastructure bidding, so that work could, hopefully was starting April, which would be basically building the utilities and the roads and the parking lots and such. So we're, things are advancing, and I don't have a lot more to share, really, unless you have questions. I know tonight on the agenda is the, the final plan, but what isn't is, you know, anything really regarding the building, so unless you had questions for me.
Some of your tenants, it hasn't been made public exactly what the vision is, what's going on. Is there a plan for that, or would, is that something you'd like to introduce some folks tonight? Maybe they can talk about what their vision is and how they, their business would support regional agriculture?
Well, I, I know that we, our vision has always been to come back and, I mean, have, you know, like a, a public, public meeting, town hall, be able to, you know, come in and actually talk through and present the project to the community, and that's what we're gearing up for. We do have several folks here in the audience that will be having businesses in the, in the park. And I will say, you know, while it's, it's, and everybody's referencing it as an Ag Park, it's, it's always, it's really, it's branded as the Tenino Agriculture and Innovation Center or Hub. And innovation is a huge piece to this as well. There, the buildings that are taking shape are kind of the signature buildings as you come in. It's the EDC, the Economic Development Council, will have their offices there as well to help promote the park, recruit tenants, brand and market the, the vision for the entire development here in Tenino. Bryce and Katie Hughes are here with Simply Organic, and they will be relocating their, their restaurant in Yelm to here in Tenino as a catering facility and food production. And then they'll be also managing the, what we call the community building and the innovation hub. The innovation hub is, will allow a lot of different venues in it. It's not just social. It's training, seminars, technology, and that's always been the vision. It's a, it's always been part of the plan to have a community gathering place here in this park, and that's what, what we'll be in. I will be building a private building, private sector, and having my corporate office there as well as two other tenants. The Colvins, the Colvin Ranch will have a facility there, a retail facility selling, you know, beef. And Hot Babes Hot Sauce will be, will have a food production operation as well. We're very excited about that, so that's, that's bringing food production, it's being, bringing meat and produce, things like that into the park, along with the, the catering restaurant facility and then my office. These are just two buildings of a future buildout of eight to nine buildings over time. So this is just what we call Phase One, and it's both a partnership of state money, federal money, local, private investment, and hopefully both buildings And hopefully both buildings will be operational, you know, by the end of the year, this time next year.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anybody else, or anything else regarding that?
Unless there's any comments of, the rest of my team that would like to make any comments.
Bryce always likes to talk. Always.
So anyway, Mayor, I, I think that the intent was, once we got, you know, advancing, we were going to basically bring this out to everybody, and that's what we're working on right now, is that plan, that program.
Awesome.
So the, the vision of the park is still the same vision that was talked about over the last eight years. I was also part of the Green Ribbon Panel, which was developed to create the vision, the guiding principles of the park, the types of tenants that would come into it, how our recruitment strategies, the synergy of different tenants and things like that. So everything's in concert with that, and really, nothing's changed.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Shea?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our staff reports and committee reports. We have five minutes left of the work session. So unless council has any other discussion items they'd like to talk about, we will recess for five minutes. Is there anything else?
You're safe, you're way down here.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, welcome to the February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three Tenino City Council Meeting. Let the record show that all city council members are present. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You may now all be seated. That's my favorite joke. It's not funny. We have an agenda before us needing approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes, we have the minutes for the two fourteen twenty-three meeting.
No approval.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Consent calendar, this is consent calendar consisting of February fifteenth, twenty twenty-three through February twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three. Payroll EFTs in the amount of thirty-three thousand, forty-nine dollars and sixty-nine cents. Claims checks number three, one, two, two, zero through three, one, two, four, three, and EFTs in the amount of thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eight cents for a grand total of seventy-two thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents, with no liquor or cannabis license renewals.
No approval, second.
It's been moved and seconded to present the consent calendar as presented. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Brings us to an executive session. We will be going into executive session for no more than fifteen minutes downstairs in the City Hall Office for the purpose of reviewing performance of public employee. No decisions will be made, and if we have to extend the fifteen minutes, we will come up and we will tell you an approximate time of that extension. So it is right now, seven thirty-two. The council and I, along with the police chief and the city clerk treasurer, will be stepping out. Thank you. Seven thirty-five, so fifteen minutes from then, thank you.
She's a Pisces. And she was an operative. I was the person who was, you know, we, she got the number.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to the beach, I don't know. I would presume that they were.
Yeah, so they're like, so.
This is not on the.
I was the cheerleader.
We had similar.
No, we should, when we buy out. Their clock is wrong. We would still. Second session, come out, there's just be a lot happening to it. And so it was, I enjoyed it, but I'm also glad I didn't.
Like last night, she did her part cell, reporting, reports, and like, read the reports, like, were my teachers.
I got.
Then they're going to their talks.
I was appreciative.
And then we were checking, so she's like, ten times, so like, you know.
Yeah.
Brief, the services of the housing actually come in.
Well, I'm just okay. Can I talk about the.
That's a good, yeah, it's the biggest employer that did this.
In particular.
It's been really long.
Fourteen hundred, twelve hundred. No, twelve hundred, twelve hundred. Twelve thousand. Oh, that would've been like, uh. Different time. No, sorry.
Okay, twelve hundred, okay. Between Parkside. I, I don't think that high schools are the most.
Same thing.
Yeah. He really has. We did use a lot of kids. But all. There's a lot of kids. Oh, she's making a channel. I didn't do more for you.
Cause they have.
I mean, I had. And the whole thing was. She did okay. I don't know, just. Just asking her. But I was. I didn't. And then they're not going back. Yeah. Oh, I think that's awesome. She had dog stories. I guess that we're gonna be here, we're moving in August, so she wants to do more. I hope she's here more. She never wrote that floss up. He's a guy, he's true. Yeah. But she was beside. Yeah, he'll do that.
He does training for. Extraction. Yeah. He's a good guy. Everyone is awesome. Any? Yeah. Yeah, the. Is that? Oh, yeah. This is, uh, this is, uh, I think. Is that the, is that the one that we have, uh, that's out there right now?
I think it's kind of, uh, sort of. See, see, independently, uh, some of the. Kind of like a black.
Nice one. So you have. Where's there some?
Where's there some, he has his, yeah. Yes. Yeah. 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 So there's something, you know, I'm, uh, so, uh, I'm, so. You know, I can't see it. There's one where. They're the ones you watch from, uh, the previous. Yeah, and then something or other. Yeah. 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 You don't, you don't, no, I, I, yeah. I think that's our outside, it is. So, um, and then somebody kind of, the second, which, which, well, like. Yes. Yeah. 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 Yeah, I'm gonna go to you guys tomorrow, and then we can follow up on the other topic. Yeah. 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 I got ten different things. I go out every time home. It's two, uh, summer. Of course. Yeah. 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 They come from makeup. It's awesome. Uh, Red, from Jay-Z's, um, her code. Okay. She wants to die. So, yeah. What color is it? Chrome color? It's got, um, recently. Somebody's water. It was, it was designed as, like, an all crusade.